And Twin West Chamber of Commerce, I would like to welcome you to the Candidates Forum this evening. The League of Women Voters is an organization that is nonpartisan and volunteer-based. It is organized at the state, local, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While the League members do study and take stands on issues, we do not endorse or support political parties nor candidates. The League does encourage its members as individuals, as we encourage each of you to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. However, the views expressed in this forum are those of the individual candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. By sponsoring the forum this evening, the League provides an opportunity for citizens to participate and have exposure to candidates, but does not provide or endorse any candidate. All viable candidates have been invited to participate this evening. Tonight's forum will be for the City of Brooklyn Center City Council. Tonight's forum, the candidates will start with one of three of six questions they received in advance and will have one minute to respond. Our candidates will then have a one-minute to respond to questions that are coming in via email, and finally, they will have another one-minute for the final question. Candidates, the League would like to request that you refrain from making any personal attacks to fellow candidates. Due to the pandemic, to keep everyone safe, we have no in-person audience at this forum or any others we are holding to keep everyone safe. We have been posting email addresses at which questions may be sent. During this live broadcast, your questions may be sent to candidateforums@twinwest.com. Our screeners are here making sure the questions are relevant to all candidates in the forum and are not in any way personal attacks toward any of our candidates. I'd like to take a moment to point out our timekeeper for the evening, and they will show you when you have 15 seconds to finish your statements, then show you when your time has expired. Please finish your sentence at that time, as I will be directing the next speaker's turn. The order of the speakers has been randomly selected, and we're going to have you in the order of which you're seated. So, we'll start with Chris Lawrence Anderson. And Ms. Anderson, I would like you to start off the evening with the first question. Please tell us about your background and previous city involvement that support your candidacy for this position.
Thank you. Thanks for hosting this event for us. I have a background in finance and was Director of Operations for an entrepreneur inventor in Golden Valley. I have been a volunteer or City Council member consistently since 1999. I joined the Housing Commission in 2000. In 2000, from 2010 to 2012, I chaired the Commission, and I am very proud of the Housing Commission's accomplishments. Under my leadership and the dedication of these fine, of this fine group, the New Neighbor Welcome Program was conceptualized and implemented in 2010. It's still going strong today, and it's a great opportunity to meet our newest residents and provide them with useful cloth bag with information about our city. In 2012, the Housing Commission unveiled the city's first community garden at Centennial Park. I possess solid business acumen combined with innovation and creativity. Thank you.
Thank you. Sisi Goya.
Thank you. Well, first, I want to say I appreciate the opportunity that, given the pandemic, that you were still able to do this to kind of try to preserve our democracy. I appreciate that. Thank you. Well, my name is Sisi Goya. I have a background in mathematics, in electrical engineering, and in education. I work as a high school math teacher here at the only high school in the city, at Brooklyn Center High School. I have been there for the last nine years. My involvement in the city is that, is that I have been in the city training tomorrow's future leaders. So, I've had people who've graduated my classes eight, nine years ago, that have graduated colleges, that are here right now working and contributing to the workforce. Beyond that, I've volunteered in households, so I don't just do it in B.C., but I get out, we go to houses, we volunteer to students, because what I believe is that education is the way forward, and if we're going to raise our community up, if we're going to raise people from poverty, the first thing we invest in is education. So, even though I have options to work as an electrical engineer and make a lot more money, I am really happy working in B.C., where I have been working really hard to make sure that we are educating tomorrow's leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Alfreda Daniels.
Thank you. So, I am a union member. I am a 12-years community organizer. I have organized in this area, the Northwest Suburbs area. I'm also a facilitator of an organization called the Northwest Suburbs Community and Labor Coalition, which work together with community organizations and the labor movement to bring about change in the city around education, transportation, and many more. I am also, I also currently sit on the Planning Commission of the city. I have been appointed twice to the Board of Electric City by Governor, Governor Dayton first, and now Governor Tim Wilson. I'm also sitting on the Minnesota African Heritage Board as well, serving there as the Financial Secretary. And like I said, I have been invested in this, in this area for about 12 years organizing around housing, transportation, education, and many more. I also facilitated the local representation table out here. Thanks.
Thank you. Marquita Butler.
Hi, thank you for having me this evening. I was raised in Brooklyn Center and proud to call it home. I attended Earl Brown Elementary and graduated Brooklyn Center High School. I went on to go to Augsburg, where I attained a bachelor's in Communication Studies, and then I attended Loyola University and got my master's in cultural and educational policy studies. I'm currently the Director of Girls in Programming at the YWCA Minneapolis and a true youth professional. I'm in my fourth year on the City Council, and during my time on the Council, I've served on the Financial Commission, the Housing Commission, the Crime Prevention Program, and the Brooklyn Bridge Alliance. I'm currently Mayor Pro Tem, and I've really learned a lot about our city in participating and sitting on the different committees and commissions, and really have come to really appreciate all those that serve as volunteers, volunteers on our commissions. In the past four years, I've been able to, to gain experience in budget, budgeting and policy and active community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Butler, you will be the first one to answer this next question. What are the most critical issues facing the City of Brooklyn Center over the next several years, and what policies will you support or initiate when elected to address these challenges?
Yeah, so, there's several. We're still in the middle of a pandemic, and so there's a lot of things around the budget that are critical. Development in our city that's happening or going to be happening, our small businesses, and housing is always going to be a critical issue. So, some of the things that we have to keep in mind on the Council is being conservative in our spending in the budget, making sure that we're doing initiatives that are beneficial to our community members, like giving out, we gave out $30,000 to three different food shelves right away when the COVID hit. We have to ensure that we're engaging our community in all, in all development and making sure that's beneficial for all residents. In terms of housing, we have to have a range of housing from luxury to affordable to balance out our housing stocks and our tax, our tax base. We have to continue to offer home ownership courses and down payment assistance for those renting in Brooklyn Center that want to own a home, and we have to continue to work with our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lawrence Anderson.
Thank you. As Councilmember Butler indicated, there are many, many issues, and she covered many of them. I, I think there are two critical issues that I'd, I'd like to highlight, which are community-related and police-related. Pertaining to the community, one of our Brooklyn Center's strategic priorities is inclusive community engagement, which is a critical component and needs to be included in all decisions that are made. I support receiving community input. The City Council must make decisions based on the information and the input that has been received. Pertaining to our Police Department, it's very critical right now that we are mindful of the, the needs of the community, and the City Council must work with the Police Department to create any additional funding that may be needed.
Thank you. Mr. Goya.
So, as a teacher, I see this quite too often. I think economic viability is a, is a big issue right now. Businesses are closing, they are leaving, and as that is continuing to happen, the, the business of running the city rests on the, the homeowners and renters. And so taxes are going up, and so sooner or later, we're going to end up taxing people out of their homes, and we're going to make, we're going to tax people out of even renting in the city. So, that's a big issue, right? Bringing back jobs to this city has to be another bigger issue. I teach high schoolers whose first jobs are in Maple Grove and in Brooklyn Park and the other places, and when these kids don't have vehicles to go to those places, it serves as a barrier. So, when I can have my high schoolers walk down the street and find a job in Brooklyn Center, that is an issue that has to be taken care of. Housing is a bigger issue also. We have to start looking at, like Marquita said, bringing all options to the table, but we have to make sure that affordability in Brooklyn Center has to be measured based on Brooklyn Center's earnings, right? So, affordability in Minneapolis does not necessarily mean affordability in Brooklyn Center. The last piece is police reform, public safety reform, has to be a big issue we've got to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Daniels.
Yes, as the rest of the candidates stated, there are a lot of many issues that we face in Brooklyn Center. Depending on who you ask and where they live in the city, you're going to hear different issues from diverse income housing to economic development and community engagement. One thing that is most important to me as a community organizer is community engagement. That is something that I plan to push and to strengthen as a City Council member. I believe regardless whatever our issues are, it's important that we engage with the community, because I truly believe that the solutions for the problems of Brooklyn Center are within Brooklyn Center. And the way we engage our community right now is something that needs to be strengthened, and that is the skill set that I have. So, as a City Council member, I'm going to make sure all of our decisions are inclusive and do intentional community engagement and work with city staff to make sure the voices of everyone in our city are included in all of our decisions.
Thank you. Ms. Daniels, you'll be first to answer this next question. How should Brooklyn Center address the impact of COVID-19 pandemic and prepare for other potential future emergencies?
Yes, so, COVID has impacted our country, but as Brooklyn Center, I think we need to be prepared, and hopefully, we are already prepared. I am very, I was very excited to see that the city was actually investing in local organizations during the heat of the pandemic, so that these organizations can provide for the community and the communities in need. However, looking forward, there's going to be an economic impact on our city and the entire country at large as far as COVID is concerned. We need to start thinking ahead as far as, one, how are we engaging our community in the pandemic, two, what's going to be the need of our citizens who are mostly vulnerable. Also, we also have to start thinking ahead and looking at our budget and seeing what needs to be allocated for the much-needed, allocated to our citizens who are much in need. And also, what's going to happen when people start losing jobs and we start having our housing market crush in the city? So, I think just thinking ahead and having a plan, and most importantly, having a plan to engage.
Thank you. Ms. Butler.
Yeah, so, very quickly, the Council addressed some of the things that were going on. So, like I stated earlier, we gave $30,000 to food shelves. We have given grants to nonprofits that serve Brooklyn Center residents. We had a workshop that worked with small businesses to navigate this difficult time. As we were building out the budget, we were very mindful of not creating a burden on households and did our best to not raise taxes. We have to continue to prepare for future emergencies as we update and update our emergency response plan and building, building up our reserves, having contingency plans in place for all aspects of our city, from the budget, maintenance of our roads, supporting our small businesses, and we must work with our state and federal legislators on policies that will benefit our city.
Thank you. Ms. Lawrence Anderson.
Thank you. As far as COVID-19, it's something that, you know, obviously, any of us have ever seen. The City Council did pass an unprecedented budget this year with regards to much more social support to help those that have been impacted by COVID-19. The city does have limited resources, yet with the assistance of the CARES Act, it's a federal grant program in which we were able to allow small businesses to receive grants as well as other funding from the federal government that we were able to help. The city does have an emergency management plan, and it was utilized during this pandemic. With the onset of this pandemic, the city has been modifying, ongoing, and is working collaboratively with the CDC and multiple other cities to create a new plan. As new information is learned from this pandemic, the emergency management plan will be updated.
Thank you. Mr. Goya.
Yeah, so, this is one thing that affects my life as a teacher. I want my students in the classroom with me. I've got students who can learn, who cannot learn distance has been a problem, and so I agree that the city has been putting money out, but I think there was a lot of things that the city outsourced or kind of just left. As far as just having a message out there, on how can we make sure that we're bringing, we're lowering the rates of infection in our city and getting back to normal? Because my school right now, we determine whether we're going to open or do hybrid based on the cases in Hennepin County, but primarily, primarily in Brooklyn Center. And so, I have not seen anything where City Council or the mayor has come out to actually put into place a plan or talk to our neighbors and talk to our residents on how can we work together to lower the, the rate of infection so that our businesses can open. But beyond that, just genuine to me, it's just, it's just personal to me, is how can we get our students back? We have a lot of group homes in the city. We have an aging population. The City Council should have been front and center instead of outsourcing their piece. Yes, they put up money, but there was leadership missing.
Thank you. And Mr. Goya, you will be first to answer this next question. Where do you stand on the Opportunity Site project? Do you support this project as currently planned, or do you want to see it changed or discontinued?
Well, I don't want to see it discontinued, because I, I've seen Brooklyn Center becomes, is becoming an economic wasteland, but I don't want to see it rushed through either, because there were quite a few, a lot of voices missing from the table, and, and, and this is a big issue that's going to affect the future of this city for a very long time. For example, given city land away and given, and, and given it with tax, uh, uh, taxability issues, those are things that we need to have a lot more people at the table. So, what I've been saying forever is that if we're going on a city that is this diverse as Brooklyn Center, we have to stop having these, these hearings that are here at only times where certain people can be available. And we need to go back out and make sure that we have a lot more people at the table. For example, have discussions at barbershops, have discussions at beauty salons, have discussion at the mosque, at the temples, at the churches. Let's have a lot more people at the table. I'm a teacher, and that's how we do things. We make sure we have a lot of people at the table to ensure that whatever idea come out, it is the best idea. So, as it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Daniels.
Thank you. As someone who also sit on the Planning Committee for the Opportunity Site, I do support the Opportunity Site. However, I want it to happen in a way that it actually benefits the citizens of Brooklyn Center. And right now, the plan as it is, I do not see the voices of Brooklyn Center residents. I have been on many doors throughout this campaign trail, and I have talked to many people about the Opportunity Site. I can tell you today, I have only come across about three people who actually know what the Opportunity Site is and have never been engaged. Most people get meals, but they never have the time to read it. That is not the best way to engage people. We have a growing population of young people, old people, and very diverse community who communicate in different ways. As much as I want this development to happen, I also want the voices of our community to be part of it, and that is a piece that is missing from the current plan as it is right now.
Thank you. Ms. Butler.
I'm excited about the Opportunity Site, but only if it's done right. I've been very vocal about the lack of community engagement. We have to go beyond just checking the box. We have to get more creative on how we're engaging various community members. It's important that we're attracting new residents to diversify our tax base, but we also want to ensure that residents that want to stay in Brooklyn Center can and, and afford to do so. It's important that the Council and the city, uh, community members are driving the development and not the developers driving the development. We have to ensure that there's more transparency. I love to see, I love to see that there's mixed rental, or I'm sorry, residential and commercial, which is very important. We, I also want to see that there's adequate green space and recreational space and things for families with various children ages to be able to participate and live in that space. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lawrence Anderson.
Thank you. I do support the current plan, which has been in process for several years, at least the last decade. We selected in 2018 from three developers, Atlatas, because of their unique perspective, they brought something that I, I don't think the City Council had really envisioned. There was a lot of green space as well as residential, commercial. I believe it's imperative that we redevelop this very valuable, as in, we have such limited land left in the city, it's imperative to redevelop this project with a long-term vision. It's called an Opportunity Site because we have an opportunity to envision, dream, if you will, about what we want our city to look like 20 years and beyond. It's very exciting to think about, we have a blank canvas, and we can create a vibrant community with multiple types of housing, retail, restaurants, art center, and many other amenities. So, yes, I support the Atlatas plan.
Thank you. And Ms. Lawrence Anderson, you will be the first to answer this question.
Okay.
Local businesses are taxpayers, but often not voting residents. In what way will you reach out to best understand their needs and provide for fair representation in City Council decision-makes? Please share your thoughts.
Very good. I think the best way to understand the needs of our businesses is to shop here, be here. I try to make a point, particularly when a new business opens, to go in, introduce myself, find out how things are going, what their initial perceptions of the city are, how is their business doing? And to just engage, give my card, you know, if you have any questions or concerns I can bring back to the Council, let me know. Another thing that I try to do as frequently as possible is attend the Brooklyn Center Business Association meetings, which gives me an opportunity to meet our business community leaders and just engage in that way. But I think the most important thing is to shop here and to do the best we can to support our local businesses, be they entrepreneur or, you know, a big-box retail unit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Daniels.
Yep, thank you. I believe the best way to support businesses in the area is to engage with business owners, not just to engage with them. It is important for us to engage with them and understand their struggles and how we can represent their voices on City Council, but also to, to have them connect with the community. Our local businesses can be part of our community if they connect with residents. I think creating a space where local business owners can actually interact with residents within the city, making sure that they are providing what our residents need and making sure that their businesses are community-based and centered, and that people who are spending their money feel safe and welcome in the spaces. And also, the business owners also give out their expectations of what they expect from the residents as well, and we as elected officials need to create that space so that we're listening to both sides and representing our voice on City Council.
Thank you. Mr. Goya.
So, I, I want to answer this question, but I want to add something else to it. Businesses, they pay taxes in the city, they help with the tax rate, but there are also non-citizens also in the city that we have to also be engaging, right? Because they don't have voting rights, but they're also paying taxes in the city. The way to deal with those is to have conversations, is to be asking business owners, what can we do more to make sure that you don't just have one store, but that you're having franchises all over the place? And then we're asking those businesses that have left, why did they leave? And we as City Council elected officials have to be doing our due diligence, going to those cities, checking in those cities that are poaching our job. Like, for example, Panera just closed and moved to Brooklyn Park. It's checking to see what is happening in Brooklyn Park that is attracting our businesses, checking in Maple Grove to see what's happening in Maple Grove that is, that is attracting our businesses to make sure we become competitive. So, we have to be competitive. We have to talk to those business owners to, to, to make sure that their voices are heard, but we also have to be able to talk to those non-citizen voters in the city also to make sure that their voices also are heard. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Butler.
It's important, as we're making policy decisions that impact our businesses, that we're allowing them a seat at the table. So, oftentimes, we do reach out to businesses when we're thinking about a policy. For instance, when we passed T-21, which raised the tobacco age to 20, purchasing to 21 years old, we engaged all businesses that potentially couldn't be impacted. We listened to their discussions with staff while we considered our policy decisions. In addition to that, checking into local businesses, I often stopped at Estella's Kitchen, not only because it was delicious and I love her cassava leaf, but also because she had a lot of problems as a small business owner and ran into a lot of hurdles. So, I was able to connect her with our, our staff to get questions answered and to move policies so that she, some of the hurdles she was experiencing, she could be able to work through. We have many ordinances on our books that haven't been looked at for years and are creating hurdles for small businesses, so we need to ensure that we're, we have a pulse on our businesses by checking in often to know what those hurdles are. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Butler, you will be the first one to answer this one. What is your vision of Highway 252? Please provide your perspective on whether you want it to be a full freeway with no traffic lights, or would you prefer it to be a highway with more green space?
So, my take on 252 is that it's very dangerous. I'm fully aware of that. In terms of, do I want traffic lights or not? I'm not an expert. I'm not an engineer. I do know that we, we have decided as a Council to turn it into a highway, so I fully support that decision. There has not been a lot of transparency in terms of the work that has been done prior to my time on the Council and even the work that's being done now. There's a lot of red tape that we have to get to, get through to get the answers that we need. The biggest thing with 252 is that we need to understand what the price tag to Brooklyn Center is going to be, what the impact to our environment is going to be, what impact to our homes that may or may not be taken and businesses that may or may not be taken, and overall, making sure that whatever option is chosen, that the safety is number one. And we have to engage residents and lift up community voice. This is a huge decision, but at the end of the day, I am not an expert, I'm not an engineer, so I will have the experts make the decision on what's the best moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lawrence Anderson.
Thank you. Could you repeat the question for me?
Sure. What is your vision of Highway 252? Please provide your perspectives on whether you want it to be a full freeway with no traffic signals, or would you prefer it to be a highway with more green space?
Okay, very good. Well, first off, my vision is safety. It is horrible. There was just recently, I believe about a week ago, another fatal accident at 66th and 252. Again, I am not an expert in this field. I've been on the Council for a while, and I've heard many, many different opinions. The city has held multiple open houses describing various plans. I will defer to the experts and ask questions to find out what I really feel is the best choice. Clearly, we have homes and businesses that may need to be taken in the process. That needs to be, we have to be very mindful of that. We need more community engagement as well to get feedback, but safety is of paramount importance.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Goya.
Yes. So, for me, 252, there are a few questions I, I will have to ask as a Council person, right? It's, what is the cost-benefit analysis? What is it going to benefit Brooklyn Center? Are we making it into a freeway just because there are people who live in Andover and in Locata that need to get home quickly and faster, or is it actually going to benefit Brooklyn Center? So, the things we have to look at is the safety of our residents, we have to look at the environmental impact, we also have to look at the, the health of our citizens, looking at the 55430 zip code where we have a lot of respiratory issues, turning this into a freeway and allowing more vehicles to come through, just compound that issue, and then we have to look at the price tag to the city. So, we have to look at it overall and see what is the cost-benefit analysis? What does it benefit Brooklyn Center? So, for me, given everything that I've heard so far and seen so far, I think having a highway- for me, given everything that I've heard so far and seen so far, I think having a highway with green spaces and a lot of traffic lights would be safe, but we have to study that. So if I have to take a point, I would say a highway with the green spaces.
Thank you. Ms. Daniels.
Thank you. I cannot echo enough some of what the other candidates have said. It is important that we are listening to residents, but I also want to stress the importance of, the importance that most residents, like myself right now, who is not on the council, have not been engaged around this issue. I didn't learn anything about 252 until I started to knock doors, and I have learned the most from residents who actually are directly impacted. And I'm not an expert, but I kid you not, people who are directly impacted are the experts. I don't know who, as for someone like me who have been removed from the table when decisions are being made about me or my community, I definitely understand. And then other people who do the book study I referenced, I understand where they are coming from. The solutions are within the community, I kid you not. Listening to these people who have done their research, they have been directly impacted, even residents who have lost family members to this highway, they have the solution. And I think we need to do better by them, by listening to them.
Thank you. And Ms. Daniels, you will be the first one to answer this question. Are you concerned about systemic racism within the city's government and/or administration? Please provide details about your concerns.
Of course. I am definitely concerned about that, as someone who is obviously directly impacted, and my community is also directly impacted. Part of the work that I do in the northwest suburbs is working around racial injustice as well, and I also teach racism. I think this is something that we have been discussing for many years, and we need to come up and talk about it. Even the way we conduct our city business, you can see a lot of racism that's included. The space is not welcoming for people who are not white or abled, or people who speak other languages. I don't see anyone up here who are doing sign languages, I don't see anyone up here speaking another language. People who don't speak English feel like they are not welcome into this space. And even with me, with my experience knocking doors and running for office in Brooklyn Center, I have seen the worst of Brooklyn Center, and I have also seen the best of Brooklyn Center. We have a lot of work to do, and we have to do this work together, and it needs to start at City Hall.
Thank you. Mr. Goya.
So I'm going to pick on the first word in that thing, it's systemic. And so that means it's everywhere. It's in Brooklyn Center, it's everywhere, it's just in our society. And so, yes, we do have to address that. But what gives me hope is that Brooklyn Center is a majority-minority city. So we have the diversity, we have the genius, all we have to do is tap into that, right? So if you look, for example, we have a majority-minority city. If you start to look at the employees that work for the city, do they match the, what we have in the city, as far as our diversity, right? So I would not stand here and try to preach to you on that, because even in my own field, as a teacher that teaches at a high school that serves over 90% students of color, but our staff, our teaching staff is over 90% white, right? We understand that. But one thing that gives me hope is that it's systemic. So that means that it's not just unique to Brooklyn Center. So that means we can work on it. And the good thing is, we have stuff already that will work for us. It's our diversity. All we have to do is make sure that we're bringing more people into the table and listening to a lot of our residents.
Thank you. And Ms. Butler.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Are you concerned about systemic racism within the city's government and/or administration? Please provide details about your concern.
So, yes, I'm concerned. Obviously, I'm a person of color and directly impacted. I have faced microaggressions on being on the council, racism in being on the council. I think that we, because we have more representation of people of color now on the council, we're able to have difficult conversations to bring people aware when they are inducing harm or trauma onto others, because I don't think it was really acknowledged before. So I am concerned, however, there are things that are happening that we are, we're going to be, we are, as a council, reading how to be anti-racist and having open discussions on that. We are putting money in the budget to evaluate where in the city systemic racism exists, and how, and coming up with a plan on how we can dismantle that. And we're also having relations, or conversations with our police chief and his department on how we can dismantle racism within our police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lawrence Anderson.
Thank you. Systemic racism exists everywhere. Not being a person of color, I'm learning a lot. Again, as Councilmember Butler indicated, the council is currently reading How to Be an Anti-Racist and doing bimonthly discussions with people from North Hennepin Community College. The city is mindful of the need to change, and I think the time is here, and we are working very hard to address those issues within policy as well as just culture. Addition to that would be looking closely at the police department and how they operate, and making suggestions for change there. So, yes, something that we're working on, and it's an ongoing challenge.
Thank you. And you'll be first to answer this next question, Ms. Lawrence Anderson. What initiatives should Brooklyn Center take to combat climate change? How would you go about implementing them?
Okay. Well, first, when we built the water treatment plant, I'm on record saying we should have put solar panels in while we were constructing it, and I was told that it was going to be too costly to do so. I think with our bus system, encouraging people to, you know, just increase ridership, I think will be helpful. I don't know, I'm at a loss at the moment.
Ms. Butler.
Yes, so one of the big things that I've been a voice on is becoming a more environmentally sustainable city. I have a huge issue with our litter in the city. It's getting worse. And so, we're, the staff is working on some initiatives to address that. I was one of the people that led us in eliminating all single-use plastic styrofoam from purchases in City Hall, and we're looking to see what we can do within the city. And as Councilmember Lawrence Anderson said about solar, making sure that as we're developing, making sure that we're implementing solar energy and energy-saving tactics. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Daniels.
Yeah, so climate change is something that I have taken upon myself to learn more about. I think we need to start with a lot of development that's about to happen, especially with the opportunity site in Brooklyn Center. We need to make sure that we have an in-depth environmental impact assessment with each of those developments, to make sure there's no, there is no impact to our, to our land or water. We need to promote the solar energy, and I agree with Councilmember Butler and Anderson on that. We need to promote that, whether it's at City Hall or within our local city, and make it affordable, which it already is, it just need to be promoted among residents. Also, we need to also promote recycling, and not just saying that in the papers, it's like, how do we really host events where residents can participate, and they can be educated about the importance of climate change and how that can impact our lives in the city.
Thank you. Mr. Goya.
The city has to lead. That's just plain and simple. It has to lead in the city infrastructures. We have to make sure that when we are doing renovations, that we're making sure that they are green. We have to create more green spaces. We have to ensure that city vehicles, also, when we start purchasing new fleets, or when we are, the fleets we're maintaining, we have to look at them. Because you have to lead. If I'm going to go to residents and say, look, we need you to recycle, they first want to make sure that City Hall is leading the way, right? So we have to do that. Other things we have to do is we have to incentivize people sometimes. And the way to do that is maybe offer rebates to homeowners and to renters, that are actually doing these things to try to make sure that we're preserving this planet. So for me, I believe that creating more green spaces, making sure city leads, city infrastructures, the lights and everything, we have to lead the way. Because when the residents see that, they're going to follow. That's the reason people vote for you, to be their leaders, is that they want to see leadership in you.
Thank you. Ms. Lawrence Anderson, this is for you to start off with. Do you support the city's government structure where the city is run by an appointed city manager versus a structure where the city is run by an elected full-time mayor? Why or why not?
I do support our charter. I do support our form of government and structure. I think it yields itself to accountability, transparency, and a clear-cut way in which we do business. The city manager and the city attorney are the only employees employed by the city council. And because the city council, we are elected officials, we are not experts. A city manager is a professional who, in many cases, has done this for decades upon decades, and knows far more than an elected official will have. So I do support the government structure that we have right now, where everything goes through the city manager, and the city council directs the city manager to fulfill our objections, objectives, excuse me.
Mr. Goya.
I think we need a hybrid. I'm out here, I've been in the streets, I get from teaching, and I'm outdoor knocking every day, because I'm telling people to hold me accountable. The mayor did the same thing, he wants to be here accountable. City manager doesn't do that. And so whenever something falls through the crack, who do you blame? Who do we go to with accountability? So I do believe that, yes, we need city managers, because they are going to be the executive officers, so to speak, the CEOs to run the business. But we also need to have a way where the mayor is running on a platform, can be here accountable for his or her platform. I, as a city council member, can be here for the failures or successes of my own platform. So I think we need a hybrid, because that's the only way we can truly be sure that there is accountability for our actions, and accountability for holding on to what we promised our residents that we're going to do. So I believe that we need a hybrid system, where the city mayor is a little bit more empowered than it is right now, and we have a city manager who is an expert also.
Thank you. Ms. Daniels.
Thank you. I do agree, I don't actually support the current system as it is, with it being led by city manager. I think just giving one person a lot of power with no accountability can be very toxic to our city. I have seen that across Minnesota through my daytime job, which I work with a lot of local elected officials, and in a case where city staff, city manager have more power, that can be very toxic. Understand that every four years, our elected officials are going back to residents, and they're asking them for their votes. City managers are not doing that. I have expertise, and that is the reason why my, my current employer employed me, but that doesn't stop her from holding me accountable, because she employed me and she expect the best. As elected officials, it's not our responsibility to be an expert of everything, but it's our responsibility to make sure that the city is ran according to what people need. And if we cannot hold the staff accountable, we cannot push the agenda of our residents through our city.
Thank you. Ms. Butler.
I do support the current structure that we have, but I would like to see more accountability being held for the city manager. We don't have a system in which we do a review, or an annual review, or a review of accomplishments and/or failures. And so I would really like to implement that process, so that if it's, if things are not moving along in the way in which the council thinks is, is positive, that we can hold that person accountable, as we all are held accountable in our, in our day jobs. I do feel that having a full-time mayor would be beneficial. However, again, we, the city manager comes with a lot of expertise, and so having more of a balance and enabling the council to hold that city manager more accountable for their performance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goya, this is for you to start off. Do you support creating a citizens' oversight committee for the Brooklyn Center Police? Why or why not? And if yes, what should this oversight committee's authority include?
So, yes, yes, absolutely, yes. And why? Accountability. Because we need, it's not just, you know, every employee of this city has to be held accountable, and that includes the police department, I mean, particularly the police department. So we have to have a citizen review committee. And that committee, I think, should have a lot more authority to do, to look, to get into investigation, to be able to recommend actions, employment actions to be taken against police officers who have been seen or have been judged, to have egregiously violated the rights of residents. So yes, I do believe that we need to have a citizen oversight committee, and I do believe they need to have a little bit more power than just something that is just nominal, and it's just stuff where people show up, and they write papers, and those papers go somewhere, and nobody ever sees them. So to answer your question right back, absolutely, yes. And why? For accountability.
Thank you. Ms. Daniels.
I do, I do support a citizen oversight committee for our police department. I think this is something that is way overdue. Citizens have the right to have, to be part of the decisions, especially holding accountable people that are supposed to be ensuring their safety. A lot of people usually refer to MAC, and I, for one, for one, have been having issues with the system of MAC. That is not a citizen oversight committee, especially where the police have the power to interview people who join MAC, and the police is the one who's facilitating. We need a space, I see this as a way where, in a space where the residents feel like they have the power, the freedom to hold police accountable without fearing any repercussion from the police officers. And it's in a safe space where we can actually have real systematic change within our city that comes from grassroots, which is the community.
Thank you. Ms. Butler.
Yes, I definitely support a citizen oversight committee. In terms of what they would be responsible for, I foresee them being able to review complaints, review policies, and offer suggestions, just as our commissions do to the city council. So they hold their meetings, and then they make recommendations to the city council, and we, at the end of the day, decide how we move forward. So I would see them as another commission. And it's only going to empower and strengthen our police department. We have to work collaboratively, with our police chief and his department to ensure that our officers feel supported. This is in no way going against them, it's only there to strengthen and create a great community space between the community and, community members and our police department. Thank you.
Ms. Lawrence Anderson.
Thank you. Yes, I too support a citizen oversight committee, committee for the police department. I think it yields itself to transparency, which is extremely important. I do believe that it should be an established, more of a commission, as Councilmember Butler indicated. We have a housing, finance, parks and rec, charter commission, all of which are application-based. I think that would be critical. And a process to ensure the selection committee, whoever that may be, that it, the individuals on this committee, commission, would be a broad spectrum of the entire community, young, old, people of color, you know, white people, just a wide variety to represent the entire community. I do support our police department, and I think that this type of oversight committee could improve our police department and be a model for our police department. Thank you.
And Ms. Daniels, you're first with this one. Do you support the city's 2020 budget? Why or why not? What would you like to see in the 2021 budget?
The current budget as it is, and this is by me saying, I haven't really, I'm not an economics person, so I haven't really done a lot of in-depth reading on that. But one thing that I'm concerned about is with COVID, how is that going to impact our 2021 budget? But one thing that I'm concerned about is with COVID, how is that gonna impact our twenty twenty-one budget? How is that gonna change, um, our budget moving forward? Um, no one expected COVID in twenty twenty, so it wasn't planned for. Um, however, I'm also worried about the large amount that we invest within one entity that promotes safety within our community, which is the police. Um, currently, as it is, we have about forty to forty-one percent of our budget going to police. Um, there are a lot of, even though our police, I support our police, just so you all know. I have a father who's a police officer who raised me. Our police combat crimes, which is a part of the safety, safety spectrum. But we also have a lot of different safety spectrum that we are not investing in, such as housing, such as investing in organization that tackle racism and discrimination within our, in our city and homelessness and more. So I would like to see more of that.
Thank you. Ms. Butler.
Um, well, as someone that, uh, was in part of the budget process, I definitely support it. Um, we just approved our preliminary tax levy for twenty twenty-one, and the council was very cognizant of the economic, um, uh, issues that are, that all of our citizens are, um, going through. And so we definitely were very conservative in terms of our, the increase. Um, we didn't have any increase in departments, except, I think with the exception of the fire department, because a, a new fire, um, truck has to be purchased. We are very conservative in our staffing, um, and our infrastructure projects. Um, we built a lot of money into the budget for initiatives to address COVID and what we project will need to happen, um, in the next year. So I'm proud of both the twenty twenty and the twenty twenty-one budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lawrence Anderson.
Uh, thank you. Uh, yes, obviously, I was part of the twenty twenty budget. I do support it. I think we were very, very mindful of the financial situation of many of our constituents. And I think it was a very much more thoughtful process. It wasn't just money. I think we went beyond just looking at numbers, and we were thinking about the people that live here and what this will impact. And based on the median home price in Brooklyn Center, the average, the average home will experience, I believe it's about a twenty-four dollar increase in city, um, property tax increase. So we were very cognizant of that, and, you know, we're in a really unprecedented time. And as I mentioned earlier, we did build money into the budget intentionally to help individuals with, uh, issues that they're having with COVID. So it was a very thoughtful budget. I will say that, and I do support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goya.
So our budgets are supposed to speak to our values. We fund things that we think are very necessary, and we put that much money in it. So having a whole lot of money, and, and, and again, I believe everybody loves safety. I want my kids to be safe, so I need police officers. But sometimes, um, we have to be mindful that, um, we have to start putting money into communities to try to make sure that, um, we are preventing crimes more than just, um, reacting to crimes. And, and I think that keeps our police officers safe if we're putting money into social services, so that they're not responding a whole lot to a lot of costs, and so that they can go home safe, and our families can be safe also. But I have a problem with increasing, um, taxes, however minimum it is, during a pandemic. Um, tax level increasing, right? That doesn't speak to our citizens, that we actually are concerned about them. There's a lot of people losing, uh, their, their income. There's a lot of people worried about their health, and, 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 and the cost of their medical bills are gonna go up, yet the city is increasing taxes. So I think we, the city has to diversify, get more businesses here, diversify our taxpayers, so we're not always living on the backs of homeowners.
Thank you. And we're going to ha, go with our final question, and we'll start, um, the opposite way of we started the first question. So, Ms. Butler, um, if you would, in summary, how would you intend to best serve this city and move it forward?
Well, I'll continue to lead as I've led, um, this last four years, keeping community voice and community, uh, community in, in my decision-making. Um, one of the things that I just, uh, started was a partnership with the city, with the YWC Minneapolis, and with Brooklyn Center Community School. Starting right after MBA, we'll be serving ninety-six young people in learning pods. So creating initiatives that are, um, creative, um, and serving our community. I will continue to eliminate hurdles that our small businesses face, um, so that we are able to attract more amenities and more sit-down restaurants. I wanna continue to push us to be more environmentally sustainable. We will have the litter cleaned up, because I have been on that. Um, we need to continue to encourage home buying, um, in our city. And, um, yeah, I will continue to amplify, amplify community voice and be creative in our, in our community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels.
Yeah, so I hope to bring my skills as a community organizer on to the city council. Part of that skill set is actually bringing people together from different backgrounds and listening to them and building power for change. Um, I do have the skill set of intentional organizing across race, across age, and across economic statuses. And these are things that are very important to our city. I'm not asking people to vote for me because I'm an expert on everything, which is kinda impossible. I'm asking people to vote for me because I have the skill set to listen to them and to represent the voices at City Hall, and also to make them a part of the solution, and to make sure that any decision that is made at City Hall are gonna be people-centered, all people-centered. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goya.
So as, uh, as an engineer and a mathematician, I wanna, you know, just say this. Um, Newton's first law of motion talks about an item at rest will remain at rest unless acted upon by an external force. I think B.C. has been at rest economically. Um, we're losing a lot of businesses, and it continues to happen. So unless acted upon by an external force, unless we start to think and bring people together, and start having a mindset of how do we arrest this? How do we stop increasing taxes on residents? How do we diversify our tax base so that we're not taxing grandma or grandpa out of their house or forcing them into nursing homes because they can't afford their property? So the way I would do this is to make sure that we do what we do in education. Student-centered curriculum to people-centered governance. Bring people at the table. Let's tap into the genius that comes with the diversity that our city enjoys. Let's start to lower property taxes. Let's start to make sure that we're making houses affordable for renters and for homeowners, right? So the way I would do that is to tap into what I know, and that's education, and that's bringing people together. Thank you.
Ms. Lawrence Anderson.
Thank you. I think the best way to serve the community is intentional community engagement. I will continue to listen, ask questions, and I'm always open to hearing different perspectives. I will continue to be informed on the issues and make the best decision possible with the council to make the be, for the betterment of our community. To move Brooklyn Center forward, we need to work together. I'm proud to call B.C. my home for the past thirty-three years. I chose this city for many reasons, and these are some of them. A city with a small-town feel, a great location, a rich, diverse community, four hundred and fifty acres of fabulous parks and regional trails. Brooklyn Center's future is full of promise, and when we work together, we can make it a reality.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And once again, on behalf of the League of Women Voters and the Twin West Chamber of Commerce, I would like to thank the candidates for agreeing to participate in tonight's forum. I would also like to thank the voters for viewing and participating by submitting excellent questions. Also, I would really like to thank our friends at CCX Media for their continued support of the League of Women Voters and our shared mission to provide nonpartisan forums for voters to get to know the people who wish to represent them. Remember that if we could not get to your question tonight, or if you have further questions for the candidates, we invite you to contact them directly with your concerns. Information about your candidates may also be found on votefouroneone.org. Please remember to get out and vote on or before November third, as your vote truly does count. And thank you. Have a good evening and be safe.